I would like to call the meeting to order for the City Council meeting of June 2, 2015. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. Our first item this evening is the Police Department's Volunteer of the Month for May, and Councilmember Boyson will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This month, the City Council would like to recognize Russell Duncan as the Police Department's Volunteer of the Month for May. Russell has been a City of Santa Maria Police Department volunteer for almost five years. Within those five years, he has logged in approximately 800 hours of volunteer service to the City of Santa Maria. Russ started out as a volunteer patrolman, and that is where he has made his home. Russ's consistent, reliable, calm, and positive demeanor make him a pleasure to be around and a joy to work with. He always carries around a smile and a positive attitude. When asked how his weekend was or how he's doing, Russ always replies, "If I were any better, I couldn't stand it." Russ is an avid hunter and enjoys the great outdoor. And is Russ here tonight?
Yeah.
Did you want me to say something?
You gotcha.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to receive this award, and I receive it not only for myself, but for all the other volunteers associated with the Santa Maria Police Department and our leaders in that organization. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next item is a commendation for retiring Superintendent of Schools, Phil Alvarado, and I will be making that presentation. See, when you're mayor, you get to do what you want. Whereas, Phil Alvarado is a Santa Maria native who attended local elementary and junior high schools, as well as Santa Maria High School. And whereas, after high school, he began working for the Santa Maria Bonita School District as a bilingual teacher's aide, earned his bachelor's and master's degrees, and worked at various district schools as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, assistant superintendent, and then became school superintendent. And whereas, as superintendent, he guided the district through some of its most formative and significant years. As student population expanded, a historical school bond was passed, and new statewide educational programs and initiatives came into effect. And whereas, in addition to his work in the district, Phil served on various boards and committees for a host of nonprofit organizations that benefit the youth of Santa Maria. And whereas, Phil has a genuine compassion for wanting to help make a difference in not only the school district, but also in the community, and he will be truly missed when he retires on June 30. And now there, it be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria as follows: Phil Alvarado is hereby recognized and committed for his dedicated service and contribution to the Santa Maria community, and we ask him and his family well in their future endeavors. So I make that as a motion.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zuniga.
Aye.
Passed and adopted at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Santa Maria
Mayor, Council, staff, thank you so much. These last two months in particular have been extremely emotional. You know, you come to a point where every day is your last day of doing something, and I don't know if anything will top this. I do want to share something, and I don't know if the council knows this, but the City of Santa Maria was one of my first jobs. I was a Recreation and Parks leader with Donna Silva and Celeste back in the day. I was assigned to Del Porto Lane in one summer. The old fire station, the back area, there was a neighborhood that was fairly rough in the old days, and we ran a center there. I had a rec center at Cook Street, and I ran summer day camp one summer. And I also worked for the Water Department one summer. So I have, prior to working for the district, I have quite an extensive summer repertoire and resume of having worked with the City of Santa Maria. I want to thank the council, and I hope the public that's listening right now in the audience understand this: This council is a tremendous supporter of the Santa Maria Bonita School District. The staff, the council, has a strong desire and interest to bring about the school and the involvement in the school when the infrastructure of the city comes into play. And that is very unique. I can't express in words how much I appreciate that aspect of the camaraderie, the communication that I've had. Mayor Patino and I have been able to serve on a number of committees together. Her leadership and her love for this city has just shown through in everything that she's done. Mr. Hayden, I can't thank you enough, sir, for the friendship and the guidance and the respect that you've shown me in understanding how the city works. I do want to close with one thing. Many of you may not know, but my wife Cindy's father, Dan Firth, was a city councilman for 16 years. In August, Dan will have been passed for 20 years. But I want to share something with you that I know will hit home to the city and city staff. He died of congestive heart failure. But in the latter part, Cindy and the girls and their mom were out of town, and I received a phone call at 3:00 in the morning. I'll never forget this. He said, "I think I need someone to take me to the hospital, because I'm not sure, but I'm not comfortable driving." At this point, he was living in the Orchid area, and we hopped on the 101. We were coming about toward the main street exit, and he looked at the city lights and said, "My little Santa Maria is all grown up now." And he stopped and said, "God, I love this city." And I've never forgotten that, because the older I get, the more I understand the passion, the love that he had for serving this community. And I know it had a huge role in shaping who I am and what I do for the city. I just want to commend you, all of your staff, Mayor Patino, Mr. Hayden, for all that you do. I know that your passion and your championing many times goes unnoticed, but it is the backbone and an infrastructure that is everlasting and one that I will always appreciate. Thank you so much.
Phil, Mr. Alvarado, I know you have members of your family. Would you like to introduce them?
I do. I have two roommates. My wife Cindy, who we met at El Camino in 1969, and my lovely mom. I didn't know, but a lot of the Cruising for Life board members are here. And yeah, just, again, friendships in Santa Maria, as you know, are long-lasting and forever. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alvarado. Mr. Hayden, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you. Mayor Patino, members of the City Council, I would be remiss if I didn't say a few words to Mr. Alvarado. I've known Phil since he was on the Board of Trustees in the library, and we've had a very good working relationship. It's refreshing in the community to have a fellow community leader be supportive and always looking out for the students and what's best for the community. Phil looks at issues and challenges as problems that can be overcome and opportunities and possibilities. And there's been a lot of mutually agreed projects that we've worked on that's come to fruition. We're working on another one that is going to benefit a number of students in the Santa Maria Bonita School District, and I think it's been a true pleasure to work with him over the years. I know my predecessor enjoyed his working relationship with him as well, too. And I think the school district, the teachers, and the students have been blessed over the last several years with the man of his integrity at the helm. Thank you, Phil.
Very true.
Mr. O'Rourke.
And if I could say something, too. The public may not know that Alice and I serve on a committee to meet with all the school districts on a quarterly basis. And of course, you know, we have a great camaraderie and working relationship with all the things that the city and the interaction with all the school districts, but Phil has done a dynamite job. And then you just rung my bell that, you know, I worked and Cindy served with Dan on this dais, and it's hard to believe 20 years ago already, gosh, and he was a dynamite person and really enjoyed that relationship.
You know, I know I read the proclamation, but I don't think people realize how well the Santa Maria Bonita School District and the city did not always, I don't say get along, but they didn't always collaborate on things that needed to be done in our community. These are all of our kids, whether we're sitting here at the dais or where we're in the school district, and Phil has really, really made that happen, and I'm sure that we at the City Council have had a part of that, too. That's really important when you're working in a city this size, because we have built, with the high school district, we've built swimming pools together with the elementary school district, we have built gyms together, and it's all taxpayer money to be used by the kids and for the kids. And so this is very, very important. I don't want to be the guy that fills your shoes, Phil. I mean, he's already, like, starting down of the body in the red, but anyway, good luck to you, and Cindy also to you. Thank you. The next item of business is a presentation, is a proclamation by Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and again, this is an outstanding individual that did so many great things for our community, and I appreciate you allowing me to read this. This is a proclamation. Whereas, since the dedication 25 years ago, the Hagerman Sports Complex has served residents and guests of the City of Santa Maria. And whereas, named for Santa Maria resident and longtime Recreation and Parks Commissioner James Murray, Joe Hagerman, the complex has been a venue for a variety of athletic events, including softball, soccer, volleyball, portola, mesteca, and more. And whereas, the complex provides top-notch facilities attracting local residents and athletes from across the nation to play in tournaments. And whereas, the complex is home to many aspiring athletes of all ages refining their sports skills. And whereas, the Hagerman Sports Complex is a shining example of how sports can be a community, bring a community together, and how local government can meet the leisure and wellness needs of the community. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims Tuesday, June 9, 2015, as Hagerman Sports Complex 25th Anniversary in the City of Santa Maria, and invites all residents to celebrate the anniversary by coming to the Hagerman Sports Complex at 5:30 p.m. on June 9 for a brief program, softball exhibition games, and complimentary hot dogs. I know Joe would love that. Witness thereof and sign here, too, the hand and the seal of the City of Santa Maria by Alice Patino. And accepting this is Joe's niece, Penny Temper.
Well, Uncle Joe would just be thrilled about this. There was nothing he liked better than a new park, and especially where you played something with the ball. That was just the best thing he ever found. Uncle Joe went to 22 elementary schools. He was from Colorado. And when he came to Santa Maria, it's just like what the other fellow said about his dad, saying Santa Maria was just the best place on earth. It was just heaven. And that's just the way Uncle Joe felt, and he came here in high school, and his name was really James, but people just said, "Hey, Joe, hey, Joe," so he just thought, "That's fine, he'll just go with that." But he was into Hagerman, so I want to compliment Bob and Alice for both saying Hagerman, because that really was cool that they said that. I just have to say that Joe's last words, this isn't the Hagerman field, but Joe's last words, because I was there with him till the very end, I mean, these parks and these sports and every kid getting to have a park was just, that was it. And he used to fight with Joe Centeno, the two Joes would fight, because Joe wanted money for Joe Centeno, for the police department, and Joe said, "If we had more parks, we wouldn't need any cops."
That's true.
But anyway, Joe's last words were, "Save Elksfield," so I have to end with that.
Penny.
Thank you so much for thinking about him and for the 25th anniversary.
Thank you, Mrs. Strepper. Yes, Ms. O'Rourke.
And Joe served for a million years, and I served on the Recreation Parks Commission with him so many years ago, and he was such a great gentleman, and I loved the children and everyone in the community, but really the youngsters, and that's why his complex is rightly. And you know, we bought that, paid for that, and then we fixed it up, because that belonged to Orchard.
Thank you. The next item of business is a presentation by City Manager, Mr. Hayden, on the Going the Extra Mile Award. Mr. Hayden?
Thank you, Mayor Patino, members of the City Council. This agenda item is the Gem Award, otherwise known as the Going the Extra Mile Award. We've been bestowing this award since 2006. This will be the ninth year that we're doing this award. It's the 27th recipient will be tonight on city employees. The Gem Award is given to employees that exhibit effective leadership on specific assignments, demonstrating positive attitudes to customer service coworkers, showing special initiatives, creativity, and teamwork. The employees that are receiving the award this evening are from the Recreation and Parks Department. They are Cindy Hoskins, Barbara Wiley, Adam White, Jason Davies, and Anna Mejia, and they're getting it for their leadership with the Continuum of Recreation and Enrichment Program, otherwise known as the REMIX Program. When they were nominated, the person that nominated them wrote the following in their submission: Thousands of youths ages 5 to 17 in the Santa Maria Valley are benefiting from a variety of programs that are part of the Continuum of Recreation and Enrichment Services for the youth, known as REMIX. The program began in late 2013, and within the first year, it was extremely successful, and it saw a 38% increase in the participation, a 17% increase in revenues, and nine new collaborative partners in the program. Highlighting, in the last summer of 2014, program included 135 children at the summer daycare camps, a summer youth dance that drew more than 300 individuals, and more than 500 hours of teen volunteerism that have gone to benefit not only the city, but the entire community through community events. The REMIX Program has been beneficial to thousands of children, provided hundreds of community service hours to noteworthy community events, and provided multiple opportunities for families to get together and enjoy their time together. So at this time, I'd like to call up Cindy Jason, Barbara Anna, and Adam, and we have a gift certificate, a plaque, and some certificates for all of them.
Yes, of course, I want to say a few words. This is great. Thank you. It's always nice to be recognized for your work. Excuse me. It's been a pleasure working on this program, the REMIX programming effort. From the beginning, our goal was to just provide quality recreation program for youth ages zero to 18. We wanted to get them their whole youth, you know, youth life. And I just think that this team really came through on that effort. They came up with creative and fantastic programming ideas. As was mentioned, they worked with numerous partners to share resources, and the outcomes were just fantastic. Kind of a funny story, I was gearing them all up, "Oh, we're going to launch this next summer, and it's going to be great, so we're ready to launch them, you know, in June." And the first week in June, I break my foot. So I'm off on medical leave, and I still think they think I did that on purpose. So they basically pulled this off. They did a fantastic job working with Teresa Rayburn. And when I came back, they presented me with about four pages here of the bulleted results of what this effort accomplished, and I just want to take one minute just to read a few of these, because I just thought it was amazing. So in addition to their traditional eight weeks of summer day camp, by the second week, all eight weeks had filled to capacity, so they ended up having to open up another day camp over at Grogan Park to meet the needs of the frustrated parents who just didn't want to be on a waiting list. They wanted to attend the program. So that was great that they opened up a second day camp. As was mentioned earlier, there was a 38% increase in youth center memberships, which is fantastic. We all know that that facility is just a gem, so that was probably one of the results that I was most proud of, and we keep getting them. We're still getting plenty of teens that are enrolling over at the youth center. They worked with Play Incorporated, who donated about $7,000 in scholarships so that kids could attend some of our programs that had a minimal cost. Most of them were free, but they were able to, you know, send numerous kids through with our programs at no cost. They hosted eight weekly stay-in-play family fun nights at local parks. They had a free Safe and Strong All Summer Long program at Oakley Park, which we know sometimes they need a lot of youth programs over there, so that was fantastic. And one more would be, they collaborated with the Food Bank and the Community Action Commission, and they provided free lunches to all the kids that were in any of our programs. So every day, there was about 500 lunches being served in addition to free snacks for the teens at the teen center. So it was just, I couldn't have been more proud of the outcome, so they did all this. So, wanted to thank them. And I don't know if Jason wants, Jason Davy wants to say something, because I'm sure they're going to do similar things this summer. Thank you.
Do you have an extra minute to give me?
Oh, I have all kinds of time to give all four of you.
Jason, you got it.
Well, my name is Jason Davy, and I'm the new recreation supervisor for the REMIX team for this year.
Oh, dynamite.
Which does not mean I'm going to break my foot this summer. What I wanted to do is just give a minute to introduce the staff for many people who don't know. I thought it'd be a great opportunity to do that. So I'd like to introduce Barbara Wiley, who's a program coordinator, and she's kind of our ideas person for all of our programs, both youth and teens. Anna Mejia is a facility specialist, too, and she specializes in our youth programs and our day camps, and also ACIS program. And then behind me is Adam White, and he's our facility specialist, too, for our teen programs. And so he runs the youth center, our key clubs, and all the other teen programs that we have. So just want to let you all know who our staff is. They all work very, very hard to put on a plethora of programs throughout the year and especially during the summer, and I appreciate the award. It's great to be recognized for the hard work. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks, everybody.
I want to thank all of you very much, and congratulations to all of you. You, all of you make Santa Maria a better city, because it's all about our kids, and thank you so much for what you do. The next order of business is the public comment session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on this agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Directions to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow the action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak.
Madam Clerk, do you have any speakers this evening?
I have two.
Thank you. So no other requests to speak forms will be accepted this time. And I have Julie Villalobos and Katrina Zamora.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Central Coast Youth Sharks Rugby Team would like to...
Okay, I want you to speak into the microphone.
Right there. Is that better? We would like to personally invite all of the council members to Santa Maria's very first international match. We've been able to bring in a college team from rugby. It's Durham University, they're top five right now in England. They will be playing at Robin Ventura Field against Cal Poly and UCSB on June 10 at 5:30. At 5:30. The event is completely free to the public. We're wanting to promote rugby. UCSB was kind enough to give us the opportunity, and Marla at Parks and Rec did wonders in making sure that we could secure that field in time.
Thank you very much, and if you'd like a couple of players, I will volunteer Mr. Boyson and Mr. O'Rourke.
No way, not rugby.
Well, we could use a little bit of a hand, because the Elks Club and Spencer's Fresh Market both pitched in, and they donated the meat and the bread, so the team from England will be gaining an authentic Santa Maria-style barbecue.
Wonderful.
Oh, dynamite. That's good.
Thank you very much.
Well, we've got soft heads, and unfortunately, those rugby guys, they squeeze them.
Very low bone density.
Oh, yeah, but you could keep up with these two.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce your two young men with you?
This is Joseph. He plays, goes between our under 14 and high school. And this is Michael, and he's our high school. The team, we've been around about four years, and we have kids from six years old all the way up to 18. And we'll go from Fresno to Tulare. We're working with UCSB and Cal Poly right now to set up permanent day camps, so the kid, all of our players can get used to the colleges and start checking out colleges along the way.
Thank you very much.
I have one question. I just spoke to a family a few days ago, and their son is moving up here from LA, asked about rugby.
Yes.
How does he get in touch, who does he get in touch with to inquire about a rugby team joining or helping coaching?
Depending on, is he older?
He's 21 years old, yes, and he plays rugby down in LA.
He plays down in LA. AG has a men's club league right now. Soundless has a men's club league, and so does Santa Barbara. And we're working on putting together a men's league here in Santa Maria.
Perfect.
We're trying to get the youth going a little bit more and get that.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much, Julie Villalobos. And that was June 10, 5:30, at Robin Ventura Field. Thank you. Katrina Zamora.
Good evening. I'm here, actually, just to speak on the ban of spice, and I know we spoke a lot about it last week, and we're really grateful for all the questions you had and all the interest that you had as well. I encourage you to pass this law, of course, and I give you a thumbs up for even being of interest to you all, because it is a huge concern for youth in our communities. It continues to be a concern throughout the state and the country, and so I encourage you, of course, to pass this law. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Zamora. I know I ran into several people and said, "I didn't know," it was educational for our community, too, because I didn't realize how bad it was or what it even was. So I want to thank all the speakers that came here, because they educated the community more on it. Thank you very much for coming. That concludes the public comment portion of this agenda. Mr. Hayden, do you have any comments? Okay. On the, moving to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, you said we had a correction on the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, with regard to Item 3C, synthetic drugs, there was a non-substantive clerical error that will be corrected prior to the publication of the ordinance.
Thank you very much. So moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read Item Number Three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendars are approved by roll-covote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Boyson, you are going to speak on F, 3F.
Going to speak on F, I'd also like to make a comment on Item B, and I'll recuse myself from Item D.
Okay. Ms. O'Rourke, did you have any?
Yes, I'd like to make comments on C, if I could, please.
And Ms. Waterfield?
I have none.
Ms. Zuniga, then. Okay. Let's start with Councilmember Boyson. Let's talk about Item B.
Okay, Item B is our minutes from the last meeting, and I just wanted to make one comment. I've received a few comments and emails since our decision to not, to not allow the Austin Gardens project to go through as it was presented. And I just wanted to clarify, I want to make sure that everybody understands the reason for my vote at the last council meeting. You'll recall the proposal was for 72 units of low-income senior apartment complex on a two-acre parcel, and we're asking for a rezone from... a two-acre parcel, and we're asking for a rezone from an industrial manufacturing use to residential use. And I believe, as most of my fellow councilors will agree, that there is no person on this dais who understands and is more sympathetic towards a critical need of affordable housing in our community, and that also the city of Santa Maria has been extremely accommodating to developers' proposals for zoning modifications, probably more so than any municipality in the tri-counties area. But, and having said that, I personally, and I know our planning department takes any change to our general plan very, very seriously. And I also do strongly believe in property rights, and this includes the property rights to develop property reasonably within the parameters of zoning that exist, as well as the ability of the adjacent property owners to continue, to be assured that surrounding parcels will not be rezoned to the detriment of their specific and potential uses. So, my decision on Austin Gardens was based, I did not believe that a three-story apartment, a three-story residential structure of any sort, whether it serves low income or market rate, should be built that close to industrial manufacturing uses. That is purely the reasons for my decision. It had nothing to do with that I'm turning my back on low income. I want everybody to remember that out there. Thank you.
Did you want to say?
That's what I thought you meant when you made your phone.
When you did it, yeah.
Two words ago, so that was perfectly clear to me.
Others read something else into it.
Okay. 3F, Mr. Boyson?
Yes, 3F. 3F is, do we need to read that in, or shall I?
Would you like to read it? Okay.
Item 3F is a recommendation of the City Council to adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a suspended state water program participation agreement with the Central Coast Water Authority.
So, I've received a couple of inquiries on this, and asked why this was on the consent agenda versus being on the regular agenda, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments. And actually, I was going to have some comments or oral reports by city council members, but I might as well go ahead and do that now, as they pertain to the suspended state water program participation agreement. The county of Santa Barbara has an allocation of 12,000 acre-feet of state water that is available to them, has been available since 1991. We've never used it, we've never taken possession of it. One, it's fairly expensive, and two, up until this point, we really haven't needed it. Over the last couple of years, there's been inquiries from other communities that have expressed a sincere interest in, you know, basically saying, "Look, Santa Barbara, if you're not taking this water, you know, we can use it." It's the only allocation of water that is left in the state of California from the state water project as it exists. So, we have been working diligently with Director Springer and also Rick Sweet on a consulting basis over the past few months, in order to make sure that we could secure this water for the county of Santa Barbara. I'm pleased to say that we did have a very fruitful meeting yesterday in Sacramento with the Department of Water Resources. It does appear that they agree with us, that this water belongs to us, it doesn't belong to Palm Dale, it doesn't belong to Kern County, and that they've instructed staff to, or they've provided resources to staff to make sure that we can put this agreement together. We haven't got a signature on the dotted line, but it's significantly farther than we've been. So, this item right here today is merely authorizing us to notify CCWA, the Central Coast Water Authority, of our intention to participate in the purchase of this 12,000-acre feet. We'll have probably several more meetings before we actually sign on the dotted line and have to come up with the funding and funding schemes for how we're going to finance this and that sort of thing. But it's very, very important that we keep this in the county of Santa Barbara. We're obviously going to try and get the maximum amount we possibly can for the city of Santa Maria to ensure our security for water as we go forward.
And, you know, I agree with you, because it is the only suspended table in the state of California, and I don't want to see it go out of, we would be remiss if we let it go out of Santa Barbara County.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, because we need to keep it here, and especially the city of Santa Maria.
And the other good news too, is that in addition to our meeting in Sacramento, we did have a meeting last week with the county chief executive office, and they appear to agree with us that this water does belong to CCWA, that they are going to assist us in the procedure for procuring this water and making it available.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on CCWA.
I have a question.
Ms. Waterfield?
Councilwoman Boyson. Now, this water had been suspended, was it just forgot about, or how did this come about?
No.
Because we've gone through other droughts before, and it never, it's never was brought up, so I'm just kind of curious.
So, when they built, we originally signed up for 57, the county of Santa Barbara originally signed up for 57,000 acre-feet of state water, allocation of state water per year. When the coastal aqueduct was constructed, it was only sized for about 45,000 acre-feet. So, during a 100% year, we couldn't get all of the 57,000. Well, we haven't had a 100% year in decades?
Ever.
Yeah, in a long time. The average we're going to probably be getting is 50 to, the best we can hope for is 50 to 60%. So, we now have capacity for that 12,000-acre feet. To be honest, it is, you know, there is a price to it, and as long as we knew we had rights to it, we haven't really needed to sign on the dotted line and accept that up until this point in time. But now, I think it is obviously more critical, and we need the water. One thing that we need the water for is our agreement with Nipomo Community Service District. We could end up supplying them up to 3,000 acre-feet per year here in the not-too-distant future, and that's going to be an immediate need that we're going to have, and obviously we want to have that over and above what our current allocation is.
Is Santa Maria the only city in the county buying for this water?
No, no, no. We're, it's going to be offered to all of the CCWA members. We have until, well, it was going to be June 1st, but they extended it to July 1st to request an allocation. Guadalupe has already requested an additional 600 acre-feet. Sol Vang has asked for 300 acre-feet. San Inez, ID1 is 200 acre-feet, something like that. City of Santa Barbara is still considering it. Galita probably doesn't want any, and we could probably take whatever is left over. I think we're working on a deal with the county. There's about $5 million in charges that are available, or that the county has accrued over the last 18 years while we've held this suspended Table A, charges that they've had to pay to the state, to the state of California. They've indicated that they may be interested in taking water in exchange for that $5 million, and add that as part of our drought buffer, so there's still some deals going on that...
You know, no one ever mentions Quayama. Where is Quayama in all of this water?
Way out there.
Well, of course, Quayama isn't part of the state water.
Did they ever buy in for the state water?
No.
They never did?
And the pipeline doesn't come anywhere as close to them. It would have been a huge cost to them to have, you know, bring the pipeline over from...
Towards Paso Robles, up in that area, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, and it was kind of interesting, we talked to Shad and Rick about it quite a bit. You know, when I was on the county split commission back in 2005, we never, ever approached the subject of state water, and how that would have been affected had there been a split of the county.
That's right.
It would have been one of the biggest impacts of anything, and we never even, never even looked at it. So, it's kind of interesting. Water is very quiet until you don't have any.
That's it.
Well, you know, a lot of people ask, "Why are you selling water to Nipomo?" And I tell them, you know, as part of the Santa Maria groundwater litigation, the adjudication, this is what we had to do. So, it's, I don't think people, I don't think people realize it, they think that we're just greedy and we're just doing it to get money, but that was adjudicated.
It's an adjudication, but it also helps us. I believe, as do a lot of people, that Nipomo has been overdrafting the basin for years, and the possibility of saltwater intrusion because of that is very, very real. And so, it is in our interest to make sure that they have another supply.
I just find this whole state water fascinating.
Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, Mr. O'Rourke?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw in my two cents on this, because a lot of people, over the years, have argued about, "Well, you guys are chicken, you're not selling us, you're not giving us," and this. Many years ago, everyone had the opportunity to build a big pipe, and San Luis bowed out, Orket bowed out, and other agencies bowed out, and the pipe is this big that we've been paying a lot of money for. And then, when people say, "Well, just let us tap in, give us some of that water," if they send us a check to pay for that much, and just to give you an idea, what did San Luis do? $100 million to bring a pipe from the lakes up north? And they were complaining at the time, they had 26,000 acre-feet allotment that they could use, but they chose not to come in. And so, that was because it was going to drive growth here in the valley. Well, guess what? San Luis has turned around and spent $100 million to build a pipe up there into a reservoir that's going down, and lakes like that. So, it's, that's the explanation. We're not holding back, it's just there's a capacity that the citizens here and other communities in Guadalupe too have paid for, and that's just the reality of life, and if we can bring more water down, along with the other partners who did buy into state water, so be it. And everybody else, it's kind of like, "I'm sorry," but we have been upgrading with that state water, the capacity of our current reservoir. I mean, we have not sucked out of there, and what we've put back in, going through our sewage treatment plant and everything else, has been a benefit to everybody that's in our water basin, I'll say, or, well, Guadalupe, and the intrusion of salt and everything else, so anyway.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So, my motion would be to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of item D. Oh, wait a minute, Mr. O'Rourke had a comment.
I'm sorry.
This is speaking, I had C on there that I wanted to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I...
I'm sorry, excuse me. Item C.
If you want to read, that's the second reading of the ordinance about banning possession, distribution, and sale of certain intoxicating chemical substances. And I just bring this up because I attended on behalf of the City Council, the League of California Cities Quarterly Meeting that was in Pismo, along with Rick Hayden and his wife, our Channel Counties Division, we attend these, and one of the things, we had a presentation by the League's lobbyist, I guess, and he was talking about what's happening, and I made the comment about this. We're going to ban spices and those things, but the state is rolling along with having recreational marijuana. And we had an update by our lobbyist about what issues people that are not for marijuana, but knowing that that's coming, about putting in place laws and restrictions and guidelines and those kinds of things to kind of restrict the use of that. But I guess I'll just make that comment. Here we are concerned about youngsters and smoking and everything else, and by golly, this state, I'll guarantee, I'll bet any of you out there 100 to 1, that marijuana, the legalization of recreational marijuana is rolling down. And if I were a parent or anyone else, I'd be calling my legislators, sending notes that, "By God, we better not allow this to happen," and really work for the efforts to devote, to defeat that when that comes on the ballot, and it's coming sooner than later, I'll tell you that. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Okay.
So, my motion would be to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of item D.
Okay.
I'll make a second of that motion.
Having heard the motion and the second, is there any further discussion? Harry Nun, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Zinica?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
And I'll move for the adoption of item C in the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It was D.
D, I'm sorry. Yeah, it was.
Yeah, C was your, okay.
Yeah.
D, okay.
Got excited.
And that's second? Okay, having heard a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Epstein.
Councilmember Zinica?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. The next order of business is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider authorizing a general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, and zone change for Tobes Group Inc. regarding a proposed 189-unit senior housing project on a 5.4-acre site located at Battles Road and Blosser Road.
Staff report is being made by the Community Development Director, Mr. Offill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, this evening, we're bringing to you a general plan zoning initiation presentation to see if your council is comfortable with going forward with a project to change the land use and zoning on some property. The property in question here is a 13-acre site that was approved as a shopping center off of Blosser and Battles Road. The yellow area, obviously, is where the site is. Just to kind of put it in perspective, this is where the Arco Station is, where the arrow is, so give you an idea of where it's located. Originally, when the Southwest Plan was approved, there were, there was a hope that with all of the housing that was going in, that there would actually be a need for some type of a retail center. Over the recession, and then beyond the recession, Mr. Tobes has been unsuccessful in bringing any retailers there. He had one lined up, and then the company changed hands and fell through, and Mr. Schwartz may talk about that this evening. So, rather than just throw out the whole idea of a commercial shopping center, we agreed to kind of allow a portion of it to be converted. And so, what we're looking at this evening is putting a senior housing project of 189 homes, or apartment units, on 5.4 acres of the total site. That would require an amendment of the plan development, so that it would show that there would be a remainder of 65,300 square feet for a future retail center. The land use surrounding the site, it's neighborhood commercial, and just to the west, it's the Heritage Project, which has the eight-unit-per-acre, single-family homes. As I mentioned, Arco's to the south, and then there's a variety of densities of different projects that are built out in the area. In the blue area to the top, under General Industries, where we have the Lineage Logistics Project, it's under, well, in operation now. And here's the area, again, showing what would be changed, the back part of the property. What I wanted to do is just give you an idea of some of the housing projects that are out in that area. I went as far as A Street in Beteravia, and then worked back, both sides of Blosser. And you can see that when completely constructed, these housing projects will provide 2,300 units. There's 71% that are constructed at this point, others are under construction, and there's just one or two that haven't started. In addition, the area that is across the street, let me show you where we are. Again, here's Arco, here's where the shopping center is, and this is where we're looking for the housing. This large block of ag fields right now was also part of the Southwest Plan, and it had a number of designations for commercial and residential. And if you added up all the units, just with the basic multiplication of acreage times density, there is a potential for another 977 homes in this area. So, we're talking well over 3,000 units in the area, which we believe is the reason why the specific plan said we need to have some retail. We are working with Mr. Blau on a project in this area here, adjacent to the new police department, for a mixed-use project, retail, office, and residential, but we still believe that this center would be viable as a retail center. So, we're, at this point, considering the conceptual site plan, which would be what they would like to submit as part of their PD and the rest of the applications. they would like to submit as part of their PD and the rest of the applications. You can see that there's still room for a major store and a number of smaller pads on the commercial portion of it, and then the senior building would be to the west. The planning commission reviewed this request on May 6, and they unanimously recommended to your council that you go forward and allow the initiation of the general plan and specific plan and rezone. And if you do, then we would take this back to the planning staff. They would process those applications, and it'd work its way back through the planning commission, and then ultimately back to your council for final action. That completes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Oppel. Is the applicant here this evening, Mr. Schwartz?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Brian Schwartz, Urban Planning Concepts. Craig Minas with the Tobes Group is also here tonight. We've got just a couple of slides that we'd like to show, just to expand on the staff report and Mr. Oppel's presentation. This was the proposed senior project in the, in the back, and the reduced commercial site in the front along Blosser Road. In 2008, since 2008, the Tobes Group has been actively marketing the shopping center, and they have, other than the one letter of interest from right, excuse me, Long's Drugs, they have had no other interest. And when Long's was taken over by CVS, they lost that, that potential anchor there. Since then, there's been no other interest. And so they've been actively marketing this project through numerous media channels for about six years. Last year, they commissioned Ernie Syracuse to do a report and say, you know, what would be a good use of this property if its full potential isn't residential? And he noted the demand for, for senior, and the location of it would be a very good location for it and use. He also noted in his report, the, the demand and the existing facilities have extensive waiting lists a year or more for the senior facilities. So that was what prompted this proposal tonight. And this is a zoom in of that concept site plan. There would be, the two large L-shaped buildings would be three stories with elevators. The three other smaller buildings are two-story walk-ups, and be clubhouse and amenities. The majority of the units would be all one bedrooms, about 550 square feet. 90% of those would be one bedrooms, and then there would be some two bedrooms at about 700 square feet. And this is really similar to the slide that Mr. Oppel showed. And, you know, just to kind of follow up on a couple of his points, the site is outlined in orange. The Acquist Apache site, just across the street to the east, it does have 15 acres of commercial zone there. And then further down on, to the south on Carmen Lane, there's another four acres in addition to the 20, approximately 20 acres proposed for commercial along Beteravia Plaza. And there's also the Walmart just to the north there, north of, north of Stoll. The other thing I did want to point out with this slide is, is Mr. Oppel pointed out all the different types of housing projects. None of them are senior, though. And so you've got a variety of housing types right now in this Blosser South, East-Southwest planning area, single-family. The Tobes Group just got finished with La Vina, which is a single-family product, construction with Sienna, which is a market-rate apartment project, is underway right now. The Heritage Houses right behind it are under, underway. But there is no senior, there is no senior housing in this area, and it would really add to the diversity of housing types in the neighborhood. And then this last slide kind of illustrates that, that there, the red dot is the project site, and the rest of the dots are the existing senior housing facilities within the city. You can see they're all east of Broadway. There's really nothing on, on the west side of town. So that concludes our presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Madam Clerk, do you have any written requests to speak?
No, I do not.
Written, oh, I meant written communications requests.
No, I do not.
Okay. I'd like to bring it back, deciding back to the council for discussion, any directions of the staff or a motion. Mr. Boyson?
Couple of questions, and maybe, Jason, I don't know if you can, or if perhaps a representative from the Tobes Group, or Brian, you can answer. What are the age restrictions, 62 or 55?
Sixty-two and over.
Sixty-two and over. And then, what, and how are the residents protected as far as rent increase? I mean, I'm sure you've run into this with senior apartments. You know, most of these folks are on fixed income. Are there, are there covenants in the lease at all that are specific?
I'm going to ask Mr. Minas to answer this question.
He's market rate?
Yeah, hi. My name's Craig Minas. I'm Director of Project Management for the Tobes Group. You know, the product itself, you know, we're, you know, we watch closely that, we recognize it as a senior product, and like you said, many of them are on fixed incomes. So we obviously, we want to keep it occupied. And so the rents, they're not specifically controlled, but we have to go with the market in that case. You know, the senior units, we have three in our portfolio, one in Ventura, one in Carpinteria, and another one in Santa Barbara, and we're very successful in operating those. You know, by design, you know, they are smaller units, and so that, you know, helps to keep down the rent as well.
And are there any, the 62-year restriction, is that, is there a time on that, or is that just runs with the deed forever on the property? Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah. It would be deed restricted at 62 and over.
And then a question for Mr. Oppel. We've kind of gone round and round on this for the last couple of days, but I thought it would be good that, I think I finally understand it, but maybe you can explain density bonuses and purposes for density bonuses and that sort of thing.
Sure. Using this project as an example, our land use element and our zoning ordinance both have a maximum density, the R3 under zoning at 22 units per acre. But both the land use element and the zoning ordinance say that if you have senior housing, that it allows you to go up to 30 units per acre. And so that's, that's our, our maximum density in the city under base zoning. And then you switch over to the state law, and the state law bonus density ordinance went into effect in 1979. It considers seniors to be a special needs group, and as such, it gives developers the ability to ask for bonus density. And in, in the case of seniors, you can have up to a 20% bonus density without having to do anything special. You don't have to make it a senior affordable project. Just the fact that you're providing housing for seniors is enough for the state to say, this is a good thing. And so the request by Mr. Tobes Group is to take that 30 units per acre that's allowed under the city, add to it the 20% bonus that the state allows, and then come in with the density, which allows them basically a 35-unit-per-acre project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Waterfield?
Looking at the project, Brian, are you going to have covered parking for the residents since it's a senior project?
Right now, it's, it's in, you know, preliminary design phase. They are looking at designing the parking stalls to have the ability to have carports and covered parking. I think it's undetermined at this time whether they're actually going to install them with the first phase, if there's, you know, going to be a real demand for the covered parking. But they're, the, they are looking at designing the parking stalls so they can be accommodated because they require a little bit more width for the poles, and, and so it's a little bit different design than having uncovered parking.
Yeah. And the only reason I'm asking this is because they are senior citizens, and they're going to require that extra layer of protection. I'm sure the rains will come back. It's always windy here, so they can't basically rush in and rush out to their vehicles, so any amount of time that would give them to take groceries out and those kind of things would add that extra layer of protection for them. I'm sure you guys can develop a beautiful design around that.
Yeah, and I'll certainly take that, that comment back to Mr. Tobes and, you know, kind of note that the interest in seeing those put in with the first units.
Ms. Zuniga?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Oppel, I just have, conceptually, I have a couple of questions, just trying to wrap my mind around this. So, you know, I understand that, you know, the developer wasn't able to develop the property as he had planned, right? Probably based on the economy and all of that. And so we're moving forward with something that gives him the ability to make some money, right, and develop his property, and still account for what we were hoping to do there. But in your presentation, when you talked about building out and how many houses that we have the ability to build out in that area, given there's going to be a need for commercial there, and there isn't a whole lot of ability to do commercial there, are we concerned about what we do now, and are we looking at what the impact could be later to have all of this housing there with very limited commercial? And then we've got people in their cars driving all over the city.
We took that into consideration because at the time that the project was approved, and they came up with a ratio of how many acres of commercial, retail to all of the residential. The property that Mr. Blau was developing up next to the police department was going to be an industrial subdivision. And so there was no retail there at all. And so we've added a considerable amount of retail in that area, plus North Block, or South Blosser has the new Walmart grocery store, which wasn't envisioned either. So I think we've got a good mix, and, and the remaining amount of retail that they're showing on the site would still be adequate to give them the flexibility to maybe find types of businesses that would work well for that area.
Okay. And then, Mr. Schwartz, do we have a timeframe for a build-out of retail? So it doesn't sound like anybody's interested at this point, and hopefully, having some housing there would draw. But if not, is the, is the property just going to lay vacant until, or is there going to be a build-out with the hope of then drawing people when you actually have buildings? Or...
Well, it's certainly going to be based on, on the market demand. I mean, if they, if they don't have any tenants interested in occupying a space, they're not going to proceed with construction. Hopefully, with the, with the build-out of this planning area and the more units, the demand will come back, you know, soon.
And then finally, I guess, given our conversation at the last council meeting about the other senior housing project we were looking at, and the concern about, you know, putting a development for seniors next to, you know, where businesses. So, you know, now we're proposing doing senior housing next to what was going to be commercial. They look like they're going to be pretty close. Also, it's going to be a large family housing project, so we're going to have lots of families with lots of young kids walking around, lots of activity. So is there a concern about what the impact of the commercial is going to have, as well as kind of putting senior housing in the middle of what is really all family residential housing?
When you look at the site plan, there is, I mean, it's, it's hard to show the distances and stuff, but there is a considerable distance between the clubhouse, which is, I think, Building Five, and the property line, which would then drop down to the parking for the shopping center. A lot of times, you use apartment buildings as, as a buffer to, before you go to commercial, then apartments, and then single-family or duplex away from it, just as you're working away. But in this case, we believe there's adequate distance to be able to be proper buffering for each of those uses.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll try the motion for my very first time, so you guys correct me if I go down the wrong road.
I just, for lack of a second.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Westgate Senior Housing Tobes Project. There's got to be more to this, right?
Yeah, just...
Am I reading off the wrong?
No.
No, it's fine.
Is that it?
If I hear a second.
Well, I think we're actually authorizing the general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, and zone change.
Zone change.
Those three points.
Absolutely.
Yes, and I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved, it's moved in second. Motion is made in second. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. The next item is another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider a resolution authorizing the withdrawal from the Santa Barbara County Home Consortium Program.
The staff report is to be made by Community Programs Manager, Ms. Quaylo Hudson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is to consider a staff recommendation to authorize the withdrawal from the Santa Barbara County Home Consortium. Let's see. Click. It's not projected.
Uh-uh.
Sorry about that. Technical difficulties here.
Come on, Steve. Yeah.
Like the CDBG program, the home program is a federal program administered by HUD. And as its title suggests, the home program funds a variety of activities aimed at developing and providing affordable housing, such as homeowner rehabilitation, homebuyer assistance, rental housing construction or rehabilitation, and tenant-based rental assistance, such as providing for rent, security deposits, and/or utility deposits.
Thanks, Steve.
Can you go back one? Home regulations are generally more stringent than the CDBG program as far as commitment and expenditure deadlines. Home beneficiaries generally must be low-income and very low-income, with incomes must be less than 60% of the area median income, rather than 80% as it is under CDBG. And also, there are long-term affordability and occupancy requirements under home that we don't have under CDBG. As far as operations of the consortium, the city has been participating in the home program as a consortium member since 1995. The city joined and has remained in the consortium because it could not and cannot qualify on its own as a direct grantee to HUD at this time. The county of Santa Barbara is the lead and fiscal agent for the consortium. Current member jurisdictions in the consortium are Lompoc, Yuletown, Salving, Galita, Carpinteria, the unincorporated area of the county, and of course, Santa Maria. To continue participation in the consortium, the city must renew the contract agreement that expires on September 30th for the next three years, and this is per HUD regulations. We're required to enter into these three-year contracts. In recent years, the city's portion of the home grant has been decreasing from a high of 480,000-plus, that was in the 2009-10 fiscal year, to the current allocation of 252,000 for the 2014-15 fiscal year. The reason for this is that Congress has been appropriating less to this program nationwide, and that's affecting the overall grant amount that the consortium qualifies for. But also, mismanagement and poor accounting issues at the county have recently resulted in the city losing additional funding. As summarized in the table that is now projected overhead, the city has lost a total of over 740,000 from our portion of the home grant over the last five years, due to recapture by the county for one reason or another. This has not just resulted in the loss of revenue to the city, but we actually have had delays in the projects that were supposed to be funded with that money, as well as we have to suspend our TBRA program for over a year. we have to suspend our TBRA program for over a year. So, after analyzing the potential benefits and/or disadvantages, staff has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to withdraw from the consortium and for the following reasons. The city's allocation through the home consortium has been decreasing and it will more than likely continue to decrease. It is now estimated that we will only be getting $199,000 for the 2015-16 fiscal year. Once the city withdraws from the consortium, the city would be eligible to apply for home funding through the state Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. And the state process is competitive. However, staff is experienced in preparing grant, similar grant applications and managing grant programs, and it would be a good opportunity to receive considerably more funding that could be targeted at specific projects and specific programs. In reviewing the list of the current allocations at the state, their allocations are averaging between $500,000 as up to $1 million. And we wouldn't have to apply every year if we didn't have a project or a program that needed funding, so I think it would be beneficial to us. If we were approved for home funding through the state, there would be more local administrative and fiscal control over the program. The city would be eligible to receive administrative funds to offset staffing and project delivery costs. And currently, the city receives no administrative funding from the county. So, and we do have administrative work to do to operate the home projects and programs here. The need to use CDBG funds for affordable housing activities would be reduced or eliminated, and that would free up more CDBG funds for capital, other capital projects. And then, in closing, the city cannot withdraw during the three-year contract period, so we have to withdraw when the contract is being renewed. But if we decided a year down the road that we want to rejoin the consortium, we can rejoin during that three-year period. The City of Lompoc has already withdrawn for the next three-year period, and this will further reduce the overall home grant amount that the county will be receiving for the county and all of its members. The only alternative would be to renew the three-year agreement, as it is now, between the county and the cities of Galita, Carpinteria, Yuletown, Solving, and Santa Maria for the next three federal fiscal years. That would be for 2016, 2017, and 2018. And this would provide, hopefully, approximately $200,000 that we would receive annually in project funding. So, that concludes my staff report, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions from the council?
I just have a comment. It sounds like either way, we're in a good win situation if we decide to bow out and go after the competitive grant from the state. If that doesn't work, we can just go ahead and get back into the consortium. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the funding that we are getting for 2015 and any funding, you just approved additional funding for TBRA, which will carry us through the next two years. So, we still will be getting our home funding that's already been approved to date to carry us through the next two years.
Fantastic. Okay. Any other questions from the council?
I may have some comments after, public comment after.
Okay, go ahead.
After public comment.
After, oh. Was there any, did I have any requests to speak? No, you do not. Okay. No written requests?
Okay, then I have comments. Yeah, then I have comments. I fully support this initiative by our staff as far as withdrawing from the home consortium. First of all, I think we all know what CDBG stands for, Community Development. Does anybody up here know what home stands for? It stands for home. It didn't mean anything, it just is home, just a little...
Ta-da!
But in any event, I have had the personal experience of having to deal with the County of Santa Barbara Housing Community Development on, specifically on home-funded projects. Our project for Good Samaritan happened to be one of them that the Office of the Investigative General Office, of Inspector General, chose to do a complete and microscopic audit of and revealed to me just how inept the county has been for decades at administering the home program. I think they're getting better, but I still think that they have a lot of baggage that they're going to have to carry going forward with HUD over this program, and this is perhaps going to give us kind of a fresh start with HUD on the home program and will allow us to make our own mistakes or, you know. But I'm sure that Celeste and her capable staff have, are well-equipped to monitor this program and to provide significantly more targeted home funding for the Santa Maria area. For instance, in Santa Barbara, they are more interested in directing their home funds towards this housing-first model, just get them off the street, get them behind the doors, et cetera. Whereas, of course, we, in North County, believe more strongly, or most of us in North County, believe more strongly in a housing-ready model. And it's been a continuous fight with South County over these funds, and I think that that's a, a lot of the funds that have been actually allocated to South County that have been taken away from North County. So, I see this as, I don't see any downside in us electing to go off on our own, especially as Celeste says, for the three-year period. I'm sure we can qualify for as much or more of the funding than we're now receiving.
Well, I'm excited about the opportunity to recoup some of our administrative costs to get paid for what we're actually doing will be really nice. Ms. Orok?
Well, I guess I just dovetailed to say this looks like a win-win-win situation. Staff has, for years, done a dynamite job, and I know that we face lost documents and those kinds of things that we shovel down to Santa Barbara to, to the county to, and then, of course, I think we all kind of kept tab on the audits that took place, and that was just, that's frightening. We've, you know, we can, I think, doing it on our own because we're, it's a can-do staff, small staff that really are very capable, do wonderful things, and, you know, the administration of that will be a lot easier on ourselves with our staff. And we don't have that yearly requirement that we've got to jump in there, jump through hoops. We jump through our own hoops at the state level, and it's much more beneficial to us, so.
Well, and thank you very much, Celeste, because I, we certainly have the expertise to handle this ourselves. I think it's really, I think it's an embarrassment for the County of Santa Barbara, you know, to say, "Okay, Sanria, you're losing more money this year," and I'm sure that's probably why Lompoc opted out. And the other communities are losing money also. So, maybe this will send a message to people down south. I don't know. But I think, I think this is, I think this is great, and I think we can do it, we're big kids, so we can do it.
And Madam Mayor, I'd be glad to provide a motion, but, you know, it's kind of interesting. I think in private discussions that I've had with some of the staff at HCD, it, they're not upset about the withdrawals. I think they would like to have less responsibility under this program because they have received so much criticism on this, so.
Gee, I wonder why?
So, I don't think it's going to hurt our relationship with HCD, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
But with that, I would move for the passage of Resolution Number 2015-49, authorizing the withdrawal from the Santa Barbara County Home Consortium.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to pass Resolution Number 2015-49. Do, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Orok?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Our next item is a public hearing item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission regarding the filing of a negative declaration for the Mission Creek Plaza project and amending the general plan land use policy map designation of the 1.1 acre project site from neighborhood commercial to community commercial, and to introduce an ordinance amending the zoning map for the 1.1 acre project site from planned development convenience commercial to planned development general commercial.
And the staff report is to be made by Community Development Director, Mr. Oppel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioners, I'm going to try to make these next two items fairly quick for you. They were both unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, and we fully support what they're doing. I just wanted to give you a vicinity map to show you where this area is. This is the Kmart store. This is Santa Maria Way and Miller and, and, yeah, Sunrise up in this area, and then this is the shopping center area that we're talking about, a little retail center. It's got offices and stuff. I was playing with Google Earth, and I just, I threw this picture in just because I thought it was so cool. You get this aerial view, and as you're sliding down into the ground, the road view and stuff, it gave us this really neat oblique-looking picture, so I just, I threw that in because I thought it was neat. Here's the actual property, as we said in the title. We're going from community commercial to C2. Building structures are here. There's some two-story, some one-story components, and then parking around the base of it. It was originally approved in 2005, a little over 13,000 square feet on a one-acre site. What happened is they, they had a mixed use. Normally, when you think of mixed use, or I've always thought of mixed use, is if you have residential, you'll add a commercial component, or if you've got commercial, you'll add a residential component. In this case, because of the way the city's mixed use ordinance is written, you can have different combinations of things. And so, they had a couple of commercial designations on this property. It fit their purposes at the time, it allowed them to have certain uses, but just in the last year, they added a large client on the first floor that didn't fit the criteria for the zoning, and so, staff recommended that they just come in for a zone change and general plan change to C2, just a straight retail commercial. And they have submitted their application, we've processed it, and you can see on the slide, we went to Planning Commission on May 6th, and they unanimously adopted resolutions for the negative declaration, as well as the land use change and the zoning. And so, there were no members of the public speaking for or against the project. So, our recommendation to you is that after taking testimony this evening, that you adopt a resolution authorizing the ND, adopting a resolution for the general plan, and then introducing an ordinance amending the zoning map, which will come back in two weeks for final reading. Sylvia from Central, from Coastal Community Builders is here this evening. If you have any questions, I don't know that she has a presentation, but just want to let you know that she's here. That completes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Oppel. Would the applicant like to make any comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written communication?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
I'd like to open up the public hearing and begin with, you know, I want to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Back to the council for discussion and/or a motion.
Madam Mayor, this, after studying it, it obviously is a cleanup item for our Planning Department, and unless anybody has any specific comments, I would move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2015-50, Resolution 2015-51, and passage of ordinance Number 2015-07 to be introduced for the first reading.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Resolution Number 2015-50, Resolution Number 2015-51, and ordinance Number 2015-07. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Orok?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
So, now we have items...
One more slide.
Six, seven. So, now we have the other public hearing item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission regarding the filing of a negative declaration for the West Fairway Drive project and amending the general plan land use policy map designation for the 4.9 acre project site from conservation, open space, and 10.0 acres from airport service to light industrial, and to introduce an ordinance amending the zoning map for the 4.9 acre project from open space and 10.0 acres from airport service to, to planned development light manufacturing zoning district.
Okay, staff report will be made by Community Development Director, Ms. Oppel.
There we go. Technical difficulty, it's looking for my mouse. There we go. This one is a staff-initiated general plan amendment. You know, we look at maps a lot, and one day, we were in staff meeting and noticed a weird designation going across the middle of the golf course, the Sunset Ridge Golf Course, and extending over onto CD Zodiac property, and did a little research and found out that years and years ago, there was a flood control easement that was going to be used for moving water from this part of town across this way, and so, they put an open space designation on there and figured, well, since the property between there and here is airport, they said, "Well, let's just make this airport zoning." And so, it was really not right because the, the actual drainage came along here and is at the southern end of the property, and so, it never really crossed the properties. And since we have easements with county flood control, we thought, "Well, this is something we can fix pretty easily." So, oh, it's not changing. Steve, it's changing there, but not here. It was working, it's just not sending it up there. Try, try this.
Way up on top.
So, what I was going to be showing was a slide that shows that old designation orientation of the, and you have your handouts there for times just like this, so pull out your PowerPoint, and you can see that we've got the project site that shows that open space running across at east to west. Is that the same one? This is really weird. And so, what we've done is just asked to have the rest of the property zoned industrial, which is the same as the top end of the properties. So, it makes it easier if there's any future development on those lots, that they don't have to deal with that open space because you can't build over that. And also, having that airport zone also messes things up for development. So, having it all industrial made more sense. We checked with both owners. The golf course is actually a long-term lease to the airport, so the airport district agreed to it, as well as the, the CD Zodiac folks. And so, while, since they were both in support of that, we went ahead and processed this. The Planning Commission heard it also on May 6th, made recommendations for the negative declaration, the general plan, as well as the rezone. And so, your action tonight would be to adopt the resolution authorizing the ND, adopting the resolution for the general plan land use designation, and introducing an ordinance for first reading, and then with second reading in two weeks. So, that completes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Oppel. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or any written requests?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. So, I'd like to open up the public hearing, and now I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and/or motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2015-52, adopting and approving a negative declaration, and also to adopt Resolution Number 2015-53 to be adopted, approving the general plan land use amendment for West Fairway Drive project, and also to approve ordinance Number 2015-08 to be introduced by title only for the first reading and continued in the next meeting, second reading and adoption, amending the official zoning map for the approximately 15 acres of Fairway project.
Second?
It's been moved in second. To approve Resolution Number 2015-52, Resolution Number 2015-53, and ordinance Number 2015-08. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Orok?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Next item of business will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor Patino, members of the city council. Your next meeting will be two weeks from the site. The 16th of June, we will have a couple of presentations. One of them will be the Spirit of Santa Maria Award. That'll be given out to, it'll be three awards that we give out from the All-American City Committee. We have a number of consent agenda items. One of them is the award of bid for Oakley Park. That's the park renovations that we've been working on for a while now. The other one is the final approval of the CDBG Action Plan, five-year consolidated plan. We'll have a couple of second readings of the general plan zone changes that we did this evening. We will also have an agreement with the airport district on a cell tower near Pioneer Park. And then the Office of Independent Review that we're going to be doing on the meeting of the 16th will be continued to the meeting of the 7th. Mr. Janaco from the Office of Independent Review will not be able to make it on the 16th. He asked if we could reschedule that for the 7th of July. And then our one agenda item for the next meeting will be our mid-year budget cycle review. That'll be for the changes for the 15-16 fiscal year budget. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. So now we'll hear oral reports of council members. Mr. Boyson, I'll start with you.
You know, Madam Mayor, I basically, just to reiterate, we are making progress on water, on both fronts, both state water contract, as well as scaring of the suspended Table A. Aside from rodeos and Central Coast, our Central Coast Council on Literacy, Police Headquarters Tours, and things like that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Mr. O'Rourke?
Well, this time, I did bring my calendar so I could spout off. How's that? Since last meeting, the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce Business Development Program was the, the president, or CEO of Orket Union School District. And then we toured the police department that afternoon. Fantastic. Just a few days away from starting to move into that puppy. It's quite something. Had haircut, let's say, oh, city employee barbecue meeting.
That's rubbing it in.
Anyway, barbecue meeting, getting ready in anticipation of the upcoming city employee appreciation barbecue coming up. The economic, I attended with the mayor, and she may speak about it, the Economic Alliance in Buellton at the Marriott. It was really about oil and very informative. Attended the airport open house that afternoon. Rodeo meeting at Chrysler, their, their open house VIP activity. Did miss, didn't, I did miss one thing, but I won't say that. Anyway, went to Rhonda Barnhart's adios dinner. Hate to see her go, our assistant city manager, who's retired. Went to the rodeo Thursday night. It was quite, quite an event in the evening. Got a little bit chilly, but it was, well, attended. Had, had coffee on Friday with Assemblyman Cacho and talked about his upcoming run for Congress and things that affect the city as far as he's concerned. Also went to the, and I spoke about it, the League of California Cities Quarterly Meeting up at Pismo. And then the yahoo, the parade on Saturday, Saturday morning. And then just over and above that, had relatives come in from Reading who had just had their rodeo and kind of previewed ours. But we went around, and I'll say, we attended every city on the Central Coast in those three days. And we are the center of the best. And this is a great location to go south to Santa Barbara and north to Cambria and all the cities in between. And they were just blown away with all the activities that we have. And I would just say, the chamber does promote us as center of the best. And we are, actually, so, that's it.
Thank you, Mayor. So after our last council meeting, I had attended the Ben Hayes Show, did the Ben Hayes Show, toured the new Santa Maria Police Facility, which I know we all have. It's just, it's amazing. I can't wait for them to move in. That's exciting. Attended also the Central Coast Literacy Council Strawberry Social, which is always a great thing. And they're doing such good work over there to teach people to read. And then attended Rhonda Barnhart's retirement luncheon. Also sorry to see her go. Hope she enjoys her retirement, although it looked like she was passing out business cards. So she's got something going on. And then with, attended the Elks Parade with four of my grandchildren, who I then took home to bake pancakes, to make pancakes for. And they were arguing about which one the mayor liked the best. And I think Madeline Jade won, so she claims a history of friendship with you, so.
I think I remember their names, too. Yeah. I just laid low for the last two weeks. I was, but I just, I know, but I was, I was laying low.
I also did the tour of the new police facility. And I went to the Business Development Forum at the Fair Park. I spoke at a math, the math festival at Ariana's Junior High. And they even gave me a medal. And they were giving out these for math awards. Now, I would never have gotten one in junior high, but I did get one that day, so I'm very proud of this. It's, it's called the Santa Maria Benita School District Math Super Bowl. I attended SBK monthly board meeting on May 21st, along with APCD Board of Directors meeting in the afternoon. And then that evening, went to a Central Coast Rescue Mission fundraising event. May 22nd, met with Abby Hamlin of the Santa Maria Times and attended the West Coast Customs Dinner. On the 24th, I attended the West Coast Customs Car Show and gave out the mayor's award. I think they had over 850 cars here. And I don't know how many went on the cruise on that Friday night, but there was over 850 cars. On May 25th, attended the memorial services at the cemetery and then the afternoon at the Elks Event Center. May 26th, I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting to speak in regards to the North County Jail and how important it is. I got there in 9:30 in the morning, and I think I spoke at 4:35 in the afternoon. And that afternoon, I went to the Central Coast Literacy Council Strawberry Social at Shepherd Hall. May 27th, participated in Career Day at El Camino Junior High. Then attended the California North County Oil Industry Update in Buellton. That afternoon, I attended Merrill Gardens event honoring Marvin Sanderson and Sly Litten, who plant all kinds of greenery and flowers to making that absolutely beautiful around. And they had pictures showing the before and after. Went to the Santa Maria Public Airport Open House. And then I spoke at the Santa Maria Senior Honors Night, which was extremely impressive of the honors that, and the money that these kids are getting in scholarships. May 28th, I attended the mini rodeo and then the going-away lunch for Rhonda Barnhart. We were all there. That afternoon, I did attend the Annual Scholarship Foundation Awards Ceremony. And I want to tell you, they gave out $8.8 million. And there's 2,900 students, and 53% of these were from North County. So I'm very impressed with the caliber of kids. And you know, it's really nice. A lot of these kids are going to go to Hancock, too, to get their, get their classes out of the way. And I, I never understood why some of them are going to Cuesta or another junior college I won't mention, but when they've got Hancock here. May 30th, I attended the Elks Rodeo Parade with everyone. And we missed you, Mr. O'Rourke. Of course, I was told that they couldn't see anyone else except me and, and Terry's grandchildren because of being in the trolley. So maybe next year, we'll, we'll think of something else. On June 1st, I attended the groundbreaking of the Performing Arts Center at Pioneer Valley High School. Lot of excitement in the air, and the band was playing. And they're very proud of what's going to be happening there. June 2nd, I did the, this morning, did the Ben Hayes Radio Show, and that is it. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is over. Adern.